17:00 PM. We're going to rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance signed by Mr. Tucker.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. It is the public comments section of our meeting. It's the time for the public to come forward with any comments on a subject related to the city business and that is not listed. Please complete speaker card. I already have some here. And you'll be asked to state your name and address for the record. And I'll get to that real quick before I finish my comment. I did hear that, sorry. And your question is limited to three minutes. And after you state your name and address. And before we do that, we have a roll call, Ms. Johnson.
Mayor Jerome?
Here.
Ms. Tillit?
Here.
Mr. Krail? Ms. Hoag?
Here.
Mr. Ralston?
Here.
Mr. Slavy?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
I'm here.
Okay, first part I have is patrons of the community building, Roseanne Lobotto.
Roseanne Lobotto, 541 East First Avenue in Mount Dora. I've handed out to almost everybody here. If you didn't get one and you'd like to see it, just ask me. I'm sitting back there. The patrons of the community building have, we commissioned a local artist, Spencer Pettit, to do some significant artwork for the green room in the community building. And it's really gorgeous and it's hanging. So we're doing an unveiling next week right before your workshop. Ms. Hayes was kind enough to work with us on a date that might work for everybody. So we're serving light refreshments. We're asking everybody to come about 4:45. And Mayor and Ms. Hayes will unveil these two pieces. And we've done, we'd like for you to see everything that we've done in the green room, which used to be a white warehouse and very unappealing. It's now colorful and accessorized and very attractive to both performers who come and use it as well as renting out the building. We're helping Chris Carson raise more money because he can rent it out better if it's an attractive building. So anyway, we would like for all of you to come. And I've put an invitation for city council members to participate in that as well as Robyn's staff, Ms. Hayes' staff, and any of the public that wants to come and see what's been done in the green room. Thank you.
Don Stewart, Visit Mount Dora.
Good evening, Don Stewart, 1222 Normandy Drive, President of Visit Mount Dora. I wanted to come here tonight to make a couple of quick little announcements. And before I do, to preface that, I would like to make a little comment that your village market is operating extremely successfully. I'm very happy to report. In the heat of the summer, ninety-five to ninety-seven brutal degrees out there, with all of the snowbirds gone and nothing but locals, the locals are supporting their market. And we're doing two to three hundred people every single Sunday. And that, I wanted to mention that to you because, first of all, I operate at the pleasure of the city, you have the right to know what's going on there. Second of all, it leads directly into what I want to say. I have been trying for a long time to set up a situation where we could be more and more helpful to the community at large and the different groups within the community. So I have been talking with Mrs. Hoag and with Mr. Ralston from the Lake Cares Food Bank. And Kathy has secured permission from their board of directors. And I'm going to be placing a receptacle in the village market. And we're going, Visit Mount Dora will do what it does best. It will advertise and promote. And we will go out through social media and ask everybody who's coming to the market to bring a can or two of food so they can drop it off there while they're there. It's convenient. And Lake Cares Food Bank will be providing some volunteers to pick up the food and transport it to the food bank. Now, you can't stick a can of beans in your gas tank. So Visit Mount Dora has also given Kathy a check for $500 to help pay for gas for the volunteers that are transporting this and other little miscellaneous expenses. Final thing is, I don't want our furry friends to be neglected. So I have invited the Kippe Food Critters van to park in front of the market the first Sunday of every month so that everybody can come and donate cat food and dog food and whatever to them as well. So that's basically all I have to say, except I would appreciate everybody here. If you'll reach out to your friends and folks in the audience. If you'll reach out to your friends and your contacts on social media and everything. And just say, if you're going to the market, bring a can of beans. Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Don, I just want to thank Visit Mount Dora on behalf of the Board of Lake Cares. I mean, it's a great thing and every bit of help you get helps. And our numbers unfortunately keep growing and people we support. So we do appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Jim Murray.
Jim Murray, 1222 Normandy Drive. I had an article I was reading the other day. And it had to do with charter reform and had to do with our city council and the ordinances and things like this. And as I'm reading through the land development code, please, I'm reading, there's conflicting sections within that and we all know them. There's some things that are enforced, some things that are not enforced. What I'd like to see is goes to take the first half of the duties of council where they are supposed to be managing, not managing the city, but actually setting policy. Section nine talks about how we're supposed to be having annual ad hoc committees that handle certain aspects of this. One of them has to do with charter review. And I think we should reconvene that. It began in 2011 and as long as we continue to push it, we should. The second one is something that's never been done, but it's written within the charter. And it's maybe because it hasn't been, maybe technology has taken its place. And if that's the case, then we need to remove it from it. But I'd like to see everybody get together, start reviewing the things that we have. Make sure that the codification is handled correctly. Because if we don't do that, we're going to have problems down the road. Because the consequences, the changes that we make today are consequences we might have to face tomorrow.
Thank you, President. Anybody else who always wish to address the council items that are not on tonight's agenda? They see none. Have the approval of tonight's agenda?
Mayor, if I could please. A couple meetings ago, I'd asked for an item to be put on the agenda. A review of the 425 Alexander Street. And seeing that, I made that request a month ago. It would seem that it would be appropriate that that would fall under old business, moving it up on the agenda. And I've heard from some citizens who are in the audience tonight that that would also be respectful of their time. So if that could be the pleasure of the council, to some way move it up rather than having it beginning at page 311. So move, if it needs to be formed of a motion.
Before that, just one other change I'd like to do is with that, the item for the contract with Frye Ocre Entertainment, item number four, and that I'd like to move that. If we're going to go with that one to get them first because it's going to be, I guess.
Yes, Mayor, it's a presentation as well as the item. So again, it's very similar to Mr. Councilmember Slavy's request to move that up.
I'd like to have that and then go into the, can we have one of the other presented presentations?
I don't either. And which order is which?
It'll be, we'll just go down to the, it will go the, have this to be an approval for minutes. And then on the public hearing resolutions, we're going to do, we'll actually before that public hearing resolution, we're going to do the discussion item on the 425 Alexander Street. And then we'll start the public hearing for the move number four up to number one. Keep me straight on that as a good one. And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have approval, next time approval minutes. The approval of city council minutes stated June 22, 2017. And the approval of city council work session minutes stated June 22, 2017. Have a motion to approve both of these items?
Mayor, I think there's one mistake on there. And I just caught it, the ethics classes, I believe it's August 11th, not the 4th. I believe the minutes say the 4th. And I think that was my mistake because I think I quoted that date when we did it. But it is the 11th.
And that's on the, that's on which I had?
Page 18.
Okay. Good enough. And any other questions to be made?
It's in the minutes, page 18.
With that change, I move approval.
Yes, I'm in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to go to the, for number one. And then we're going to do that, we need to go back to that. Number one of the public hearings and then the number, and the discussion item. Number four, so the approval, resolution number 2017-96, and contract with Frye Ocre Entertainment for film production for Public Protection Services for the Wood Branch Innovation District. And we have the resolution read by Titleless.
Resolution number 2017-96, the resolution of City of Mount Dora approving the contract with Frye Ocre Entertainment Inc. for video production for the Innovation District. Authorizing the mayor execute the contract in accordance with sound procurement practices and principles, providing for legislative compliance and debt, providing for implementing administrative action, providing for savings provision, providing for scavengers errors, providing for conflicts, providing for sustainability, and providing for effective aid.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This is an agreement with Frye Ocre that we're requesting you to approve for PR services that will help promote our unique events, our activities and special event, features of the community. This is to spread our branding awareness. It's a representation of the city in the future, for the future Innovation District Wood Branch area. The chosen firm has been tasked to just give a good representation, again, as I stated earlier, to help with visitor traffic, attracting new businesses, and just overall communicating through publication, print, the digital world, web, and the social media. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn this over to the representation and owner of the firm, Frye Ocre. And I'd like to open it for Ernie to introduce himself and give a little quick bio of your company. Please start.
Hi, Ernie. Thank you for having me. I've got a presentation about who we are and the basic concept, the idea for the film that we presented to the committee. My name's Ernie Mossdeller and I am Frye Ocre Entertainment. We are a film production company based in Fort Lauderdale and New York. We have, we do mostly television commercials. And these are a sample of just a few that we've worked on, the videos. Mostly, our biggest clients are New York ad agencies. We do do a lot of web content. We also have developed feature films. And we have several non-scripted television shows in developing at this time. So we have a wide range of work. I didn't, I wanted to bring you guys a little bit of a sample of work. I did bring you like a tiny sample of work. And in the interest of making it a really good presentation, I put really big files in this presentation. And they're choking the computer a little bit. So they stutter. So my video doesn't stutter like this. But I'll play a couple for you. The first one is a thirty-second national television commercial that is one of several that are on the air right now for hockey bicycles.
Make an afternoon into an heirloom. Make the transition from mom to best friend. Make her smile just like she did when she was learning to rock. Make one last memory before you let her go.
Interestingly, that was actually shot in Orlando. We don't shoot everything in Florida, we shoot all over the world. This next one was shot in Uganda for a large nonprofit.
When you know who you're helping, you know how to help. We connect school to school, organization to organization, community to community, and person to person. You can help plant an organic farm for a school so kids can eat lunch. Give a goat to help a kid pay for their education. Help dig a well so a community can have clean water. Help women support their families by supporting their micro businesses. You can follow the progress of your project, connect with the people you're helping, even visit them to see the results. We help you plant the seed with sustainable projects that help people and communities grow out of poverty on your own. In Africa and Central America, we are global village connect. We connect people to make it a better world.
So, I mean, that's a tiny little sampling. If you don't want to look more, there's a lot more on FryeOcre.tv. The budget ranges that we work in, we've worked on million and a half dollar single commercials for Kool-Aid. And we've worked on little pieces that were $10,000 for smaller brands and PSA. So we have a wide range of work there. But I didn't really come here to talk about us, I came here to talk about Mount Dora and how we can make a film that helps attract people to this Innovation District. And by attract, I mean, put Mount Dora in their consideration set. And I will say, one more thing about me. A lot of you have seen this picture around town. It hangs in the museum and it hangs, and actually, there's one in my parents' house. And that's because the guy that's in the straw bed there on the corner is my grandfather. My family's been in this town for a really long time. I grew up here. And so I understand the perception that is out there about Mount Dora. Mount Dora's got a wonderful perception. The fact that it has any at all is way different than it was when I was growing up here. I went to school in Georgia and I'd tell people I was from Florida and they'd say, "Where, Miami?" And I would say, "No, near Orlando." Well, I did a shoot in Australia and I had people that knew where Mount Dora was. Mount Dora's got this great reputation as this great, wonderful little town, beautiful sunsets. We have wonderful festivals, we have lots of antiques. And lately, we've been getting a ton of really good press. It's all out there. Pressing both the print media and also online. And what's great about that is that people know this place. And they say, "Mount Dora's this great little town. You really have to go there for a weekend. You really have to go visit." And that's the thing, the perception about Mount Dora is it's a great place to visit. But as people who live in Mount Dora, we don't just visit, we live it. And we live it differently than is perceived out there. Because Mount Dora is a younger, more active, more diverse community than our numbers show. We have great schools, a number of great schools. We have wonderful community relations, law crime. We have housing for pretty much any economic, economic status. We have activities for kids, for adults, for any kind of interest that you can think of. It's all here in Mount Dora. It is, people who live outside the city limits and call Mount Dora home are able to access all of these things. We do use our tourism, our sort of tourism, I'm quoting what I say, our tourism, the aspects of our tourism, because we're able to go downtown ourselves and go and enjoy wonderful meals and things that are there because we attract visitors through that. We're close to Orlando, so living here allows us to access all the things that are in Orlando. Not only that, we're close to nature. We have springs and we're in between both coasts. We have, we're very close to the forest. You can call Mount Dora home and live right outside of town in a rural lifestyle if you want. So we have all of these things to offer. And we also want to expand on what we already have. And we want to expand with a, an Innovation District that provides a clean, designed, measured amount of growth that doesn't hurt all of the good things that we already have here in Mount Dora. So while the perception is, Mount Dora's a wonderful place to visit and play, the reality is, is that it's also a wonderful place to live and work. And as I was thinking about what to do for a film like that to convey that to potential CEOs and to potential investors, to potential developers, you know, I said, "How can this city, how can this city say that to somebody and have them believe it?" And I finally came to the conclusion that you can't. The city can't say that, but people can. Real people have more credibility in today's world than brands do. Real people speak to real people better than a city speaks to regular people. It's more powerful. And I'll give you one quick example. When you go out to a new, you're in a new city and you've never been to a restaurant there, do you trust the restaurant ads that say, "We have the best tromboli in town"? Or you call up Yelp and you read real people's reviews of the best tromboli in town? That's what everybody does now. People trust real people. And more and more and more, especially in web contexts where this is going to be delivered and in one-on-one context, real people can provide some emotion. They also show the diversity and the youth of the surrounding area. So we want to use real people to tell the story. We want to use the imagery of the things that people don't expect to tell the story. And we want to blend it with the things that people understand. I want to show you one more piece of work that, that shows you the power of real people. Now, this is a very different emotion than what we want to create with Mount Dora. And I'll show you just how powerful real people can be.
Buddy, second week in the month, I'm already out of money for food. And I'm not the kind of guy that would last in a shelter. All right? I am street smart, but I'm sure there are people that are smarter than me. I live the best that I can with what I have. Meals on Wheels is important because they provide sustenance. If you give somebody food, it's love. Don't talk about it, don't put it off. Just get it from your heart.
See how much more powerful that is than somebody just interneting and saying, "Please give me Meals on Wheels, we have a lot of hungry seniors." People speaking to people is the way I think we want to go. We want a broad sampling. And we want to put it into a film that shows Mount Dora for what it, for what we know Mount Dora is. Because that will create a different perception in someone who's maybe heard of this as a tourist destination, but has included it in the consideration set as a place to launch a business or move a business. We're Frye Ocre Entertainment and we look forward to working on this project with all. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presentation. Recently, we hired a company, Lake Dona. How are they going to interact together with the company we've brought in to develop Lake Dona?
Sure. Richard, Dr. Richard Levy is our consultant for the economic side of that. And he will be involved in this whole process because what Frye Ocre will offer us is the avenue to sell that thirteen-hundred acres the way we wish to market it and limit that marketing to the strategies established from economic development and that team as well as Frye Ocre and how they can hone in on that thirteen-hundred acres which has the, which includes the college and other areas as well as the Duke Energy certification process that we want to kind of in, and kind of include in that process and the fact that we've gone out and taken extra steps. So we're actually, they're all merged together, they'll become one process. Dr. Richard Levy is still the lead as far as economic. But this is an important support process that's part of the PR, that's part of that process. It's needed, it's very much needed.
Yeah, hi, Ernie, thank you, that was great. Do we know how soon or, you know, what your times, timetable is for producing these things? I'm reading a plan and I'm, you know, on the social media.
A typical job like this is usually, it's usually awarded with an air date or with a live date because there's a digital in mind. And typically, a job like this is about a thirty-day job. Now, given that, a lot of what we want to show isn't here right now. Kids are not in school. But they will be soon. They will be, they will be next month. So I don't expect it to stretch a lot beyond that. But I would like to stretch it a little bit because I think that youth baseball and things like that are images that we want to get. And we want to, we want to have kids in school and we want to do that. But they go to school now, like, early in August, so that should, that should help.
I believe we can stretch it through the first craft festival in October. That's important for Frye Ocre to really show that festival atmosphere and what we as a town represent. So I think it's important, we'll have the seafood festival, a few other things, and the craft, the first craft. So I think that's important to be part of it in the sense of at least festivals because that is, again, it's something that people look for. And we can put that out there. But as soon as we get through that, I think we need to market it and have it out there available because the consultants, again, will look for November, December, we need to be selling it. That's going to work in conjunction with our Duke Energy as, with them getting back with us and leading that process. So it's actually a good timing for all of this, I believe, for the early part of fall for us to have this ready.
And to be fair, I mean, the way, the way that, and what, kind of what we're known for within the film business and within the advertising business, you can talk to a lot of the agencies in New York we've worked with, is we sort of, we try to over-deliver in terms of footage. So I imagine that we're going to have lots and lots and lots of stuff that ends up on the floor. But it's not because it's not used. So there may be a variation that we can have ready a little before that. And, you know, there might be a different variation that can come along later. There should be a lot of footage. I mean, I already own a lot of footage of Mount Dora. And that's fair game for this as far as I'm concerned, so.
Before any more discussion, I give the motion for approval for resolution number 2017-96.
So move.
Taken.
Any more special examples?
So, so if I'm understanding correctly, a lot of what the message will be will be the quality of life to attract the type of businesses that will be defined by the Economic Development Consultant. And it will be presenting, this is what we have, that we, we know what we have. But just looking at what you had up there, it brought in a lot of the things you don't think about in one thirty-second piece. So it's, it's.
Exactly, it's about the lifestyle.
Catch their attention because then, then you're looking at the lifestyle for the type of employers who would want to come with their employees.
Exactly. There's a lifestyle here for the CEO, there's a lifestyle for the employees. So you can move them here from somewhere else. And, and by using real people to talk, it indicates that there are employees here ready to work for you as well. So it's a.
Thank you, great presentation, thank you, very impressive. But we own the ultimate product?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other? Anybody from the audience wish to address this issue? Okay, same none. Can we have a roll call of the ladies and gentlemen?
Ms. Hoag?
Yes.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillit?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
All right, officials, get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take up discussion item number four, the 425 Alexander Street. And this is a discussion item. And seeing that, we do have, I know there's a lot of people here tonight that wish to address it all about it. And we did have some cards earlier that were filled out. And I'm allowed the two cards that I had to. And I'd like to have the audience, it's okay with the, you know, with the council, have the audience to come up and, I think people want to talk about it first before the council gets into their discussion. And whatever, we're going to be talking down on that later, so. And that's, okay, I'm going to call up Tom Cuthon.
On this page 311 on the agenda, as I understand.
I believe we got it.
Thank you.
Read it. Name and address.
My name is Tom Cuthon. I live at 346 East Sixth Avenue, Mount Dora. Still right over there. With your permission, I'd like to read a letter, actually a brief statement from Josh Hemingway at 1177 East Fifth Avenue, Mount Dora. He did not be here tonight. And it goes as follows. "I would like to voice my disapproval of the sidewalk cafe extension located at 425 Alexander Street, aka Gianni's Italian Restaurant, in the city of Mount Dora owned by Main Street Leasing. Firstly, I do not object to improvements in the city when it is acceptable and especially if it helps small business and merchants survive. However, the recent addition appears to have been constructed by not following the standard method of applying floor permits to alter the front of an historic building and a public sidewalk. It appears two qualified professionals in the city of Mount Dora, Public Works and Main Street Leasing, have colluded in an attempt to force a change to 425 Alexander Street. And if it had gone through the standard process of review, it would more than likely have been denied in its present construction. The licensee and whole harmless agreement issued to Larry Baker of Main Street Leasing on October 5th, 2016, by Stephen Kirkoof, witnessed by Michelle Middleton of Main Street Leasing in the city of Mount Dora, clearly states the guidelines concerning the sidewalk cafe seating application. In my opinion, this is a blatant disregard for process that is designed to prevent things like this from happening. No permits..." No permits were pulled for the current design, there are no technical designs submitted for construction or drainage, and I do not believe in any way that this is an improvement to the ADA on the stretch of Alexander Street. Furthermore, it does change the front of the building's entrance and appearance as well as the value, as the patio is now a direct, undivided parcel, not divided by a city sidewalk, and not compliant with a permit for sidewalk cafe seating. I would suggest that both the city of Mount Dora Public Works Department and Main Street Leasing should be held solely responsible in that, I presume both parties knew what they were doing, and that the wall should be removed and the sidewalk reconstructed in its original form, and the proper application procedures should be followed with regards to the sidewalk cafe seating guidelines, especially since the design drawing filed by Gianni Livermore on June sixth, twenty seventeen, with the application and permit depicts a raised wooden structure on the opposite side of the sidewalk at four twenty-five Alexander, not a wall, and, and repositioning a public right-of-way. And lastly, if this current construction was designed and forwarded to the city management for approval by Public Works Director John Peters, I would hope that appropriate action be taken regarding his bad judgment that was not in the best interest of the city and its citizens as a whole. Thank you for your time. And if, with your permission, I'd like to enter some documents and the letter itself."
Thank you. Thank you. For your interest, that was exactly three minutes.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, and Alan Kalka? Is he still here? Alan's still up? Yeah. We're talking about that, but, okay, so I'm going to open it up and, to the public and, and just, you know, come on up, state your name, address. And, and I don't know how the comments are going to go, but there's going to be probably different kinds of comments happening. If they're already been made, try not to keep repeating what maybe has been said. And so, we can keep things moving for us, or people want to talk and talk. So, anybody who wants to hear a talk on this issue, please?
Good evening, Amber Antonio Scherlock, eleven twenty North Alexander Street. I've lived in this community often for thirty years, and it appears that a certain property owner is given preferential treatment. And I don't find this to be fair or equal, and it leaves the city vulnerable and open to potential lawsuits.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Dajyasko, I live at ten twenty-four East Fifth Avenue. I also own only a yard of bunch on the farm. I find it quite amazing that it's been allowed to happen after all the work that's been done and roofing the sidewalks and everything. And now we have Aracón of the Bell of More blocking the public right-of-way, and we've got to move around, maneuver around that. And it just, it goes against what the town's been trying to do as far as I can see. And also, I think it's really unfair, we're not, all us business owners are allowed to extend our retail space out into the sidewalks so we can have forty-eight inches of sidewalk down the road, and have a nice walk in front of you through our own shops. It would seem fair if they can do it, we can do it, which kind of defeats the purpose of all the work that the city has done. And it's been a great job so far.
Sharon Nipples, one fifty South Clayton Street. I've been here thirty years, and I guess anybody that owns a shop or a restaurant can now take over the sidewalks. Because that's what I'm seeing over here. I don't think it was done correctly. I've seen flooding going on there. I saw a woman in a wheelchair almost fall out of a wheelchair trying to maneuver. I'm very disappointed in what y'all have come up with letting this slide by. I think that it just doesn't look right. We spent so much money, as all of you are aware, to make these sidewalks, to take care of trees, to take care of this, to take care of that, and now we build a wall, and now we've given permission, as I'm seeing it, for anybody doing that. Any of the shops, any of your shop owners? Put any of your stuff out on the streets. Because that's what we're allowing now. I just want us to look at this. And I don't get up here often. I don't feel I have to because that's why I have you all here, to take care of our best interest. I don't think this is in our best interest.
Any thoughts from the audience? Okay, come on, come up to the second one. Folks are talking too fast, I'm still typing. No problem, I'll get it.
Evening. Um, I think the cafe restaurant, Mike Masterson, seven eight eight seven Crosswinds Way, Mount Dora. I think the cafe restaurant concept has exceeded the original intent. And in my opinion, and, and the Gianni situation, it's, it's exacerbating the ADA issues. There are multiple situations in the city where stairs, porches, entrance overhangs encroach on the right-of-way. Now, I realize these porches, et cetera, have value in terms of providing shade, and when it's raining cats and dogs, they provide value. But when they encroach onto the side, onto the city right-of-way, let's call it that, and they inhibit our ability to address an ADA situation because they kind of are there, then I think we need to have the, we need to stop being so nice to the landowners and say, excuse me, I have to fix this within the area that is available to me. And your roof is going to have to go away, we're going to fix this thing to the right way, we will, we'll try to make it acceptable to you, but we're not going to have something that is going to add more problems to the city that we're going to have to fix later on. I looked at the pictures that y'all have in your agenda, and on page five ten, the sidewalk is incomplete and the plants encroach. That's an ADA issue. I don't know about sandwich boards, but on page five eleven, there's a sandwich board which is going to get in the way from a safety standpoint. Page five twelve displays difficulty exiting a car, another safety issue. Five fifteen, a sandwich board, five sixteen, we've got imp, vehicle access, issues. Tables and chairs on page five twenty, they impact parking. I drove around town tonight before I came to the meeting. There are a number of tables and chairs in, I guess what you'd call the curb side area that interfere with the ability of someone to get out of a car freely and open the door. Second of all, I used to be a safety manager, and the first thing with my responsibility was safety. Those curb side tables and chairs, if there's ever a fire and people need to get out of that building, all those tables and chairs on the curb side are going to get in the way as people pour out of that building and try to get to a safe spot, AKA the street, that's what they're thinking. So, this, I think that we need to look at those things, revisit the ordinance. I don't think that those curb side tables and chairs should, should continue. And I think that we should also look at the idea that there are a number of porches on, I think it's, whatever that street is, right across the street, Baker Street, that it continues down. There are a number of porches that intrude into sidewalks. And frankly, we've got a big problem to fix that sidewalk and that whole geography. But those porches, I'm, I'm sorry to say, need to be collateral damage as while we fix a street and make it a full-size area, okay? Okay?
You good?
Thank you. As again, I suggest city staff review the ordinance.
Anybody else? Seen none, that's Ms. Hayes?
So, at the June twentieth meeting, it was requested that I bring back to you some other examples of the downtown area where we have made, from a city perspective, as well as even in some cases, a private perspective, where there have been adjustments to the porch area, if you want to call it cafe, to find the facility, to parking, various. Obviously, I provided you a four-page letters to the set and go through everything, so that I'm not sure that you wish for me to do that. But I think it's important that we look at the, what we've provided you in the sense of the concerns that we've had, what we looked at, what we initially looked at in facilitating removal of the newly constructed wooden decks, providing, looking at providing alternatives. This was one of the selections we given, we provided you in Attachment Seven, a chronological order of the process we went through. We did reach out at different times, as I noted in my memo, where I visited the different boards, trying to at least listen to the boards and to acknowledge and address the issue because, again, that's the responsibility, to look at the, the issue of what was presented. We worked with the owner, we did ask that they hold off on finishing it, that was one reason the permit was not completed, is because we were not satisfied with the product. They worked with us in that process. You know, I, I stated, and I will not continue to go through it over and over because I think you have questions that I would rather listen to your questions. But one of our concerns was the, it truly was the ADA and the sidewalks with the wooden decks being in place, it created challenges for us. So, that was a, an issue that we looked at. During the process, we have acknowledged and we did have noted that we definitely need to look at our ordinance, we need to look at our cafe ordinance in general, we need to look at all the ordinances that surround this type of improvement. To this date, there is not an ordinance or a policy or anything in writing that says that these type of changes need to be presented to councils. So, though, these items that we took on as part of the city were part of the city operations. And, again, I'd be glad to go to, go through the process with the council if we need questions, but I believe I provided the information that you requested, and I would just like to answer any of your questions you may have on the data that we provided. And if, if it's okay with you as we go through the process, if there's a question you may have that I may not have an answer to, I'd like to open it up to Mr. Peters who's here on the public works side.
Well, I'm, I do, I do have some, some questions, I guess. First of all, I'd like to make a, a correction on page three twelve, under paragraph four, where it says, discussing the city's electric division and power pole, et cetera, designed with three transformers. It says, at the sole expense of the city, the electric division has moved these transformers to another location and on and on. I would like to correct that, that the owners of, or proprietors of Magical Meat paid five hundred dollars towards that moving of, of those electrical transformers. So, I would like that corrected for the record. It was not at the sole expense of the city. So, that's, that's my first point.
Can I ask, so that we don't have to go back? Do we have what the total cost was? Sorry.
Do we have what the total cost was, so we can do the comparison? I don't remember. Okay, that's fine.
I wasn't aware, so I didn't-
I'm just correcting the fact that it was not a sole expense, so. Okay. So, then, up, a little bit further up on that page, it says, the city of Mount Dora, under number one, "City of Mount Dora Code of Ordinances requires existing sidewalks to be a minimum of four feet in width, while sidewalks in new developments must be a minimum of five feet in width." And yet, the current sidewalk cafe ordinance states, in paragraph six A, that sidewalk cafe shall be located in such a manner that a minimum width of five feet is maintained at all times as an unobstructed pedestrian path. So, obviously, we have a disconnect here. So, I guess my question is, what takes precedence? Does it, does the individual ordinance specific to the issue at hand take precedence? Or, I, I don't know where in, in the Mount Dora Code of Ordinances that other statement is, but, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that it's not there, I'm just saying that there's a, there's something that doesn't jive.
As point of information, are you referring to three point five dot two nine dot six dot A?
I'm referring to the sidewalk cafe ordinance. I don't have-
Yeah, I think that's where it is.
Yeah, I, I don't have the number. I just, I was having a terrible-
I spent all afternoon trying to memorize answers.
So, I did a cut pace.
Five dot six dot A. I practiced all, all afternoon on not memorizing that.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
And that's the end of that.
And I'm just saying, one, one document says one thing, the memo says, says something else.
Wait, hold on a sec. Did you want to-
My, my understanding on that, the five foot was actually within the cafe. Again, we can reach out to legal and, and let them look at that, but that was within the, the realm of the cafe, the five foot applied, not within the sidewalk area or the, the boundaries of that sidewalk and so forth. That was within the cafe, you should be able to go from seat to seat with a five foot, and maybe that's not the proper way of staying it, so I would turn that definitely to legal. But it is in, you're right, in the correct section, Councilmember Slavy, it is in the section three point five point two nine, as well as there's two other sections that it is in.
That's six point eight.
So, it just said unobstructed pedestrian path, so I don't know where else is an unobstructed pedestrian path except the sidewalk. Now, the wall, if you walk in, you walk into the, you walk into this patio area and you hit the wall, it's not an unobstructed area. So, that, that was, you know, that-
It's Attachment fourteen legal, you'll see different codes as part of that. And under the sidewalk cafe, last part of that, it does refer to that, but it is within the cafe itself area, not outside of that area. That's my understanding of the code when I read through the code.
Okay, well, I will have probably more to say later in the discussion, but that's, those are just a couple of things I wanted to point out right up until this week, continue our discussion. No, I mean, I'm done for, for now. I, I'd like to be able to chime in later.
Thank you. I'm sorry to help out too much. Well, thank you very much, Mayor. And I'd like to start out with- Yes. I'd just like to start out by saying that this is a difficult issue for a lot of citizens, and, and it's not difficult for me, in that sometimes it's about who owns what property and who it is. And I'll tell you that I don't have an axe to grind. I don't, I don't know the owners of the property, I don't know if they're here tonight. And, and I know that I have, I've stood up for that property owner when someone wanted to bring in an occupancy tax. I stood up and said, no, that's silly. I've appointed members of that organization onto a board, or member. I've, you know, I've, I've hoped shots great all the time. I remember voting once against a traffic light that would help someone who was visually impaired, and I voted against it only because the accounting is wrong. So, I hope that I'm an equal opportunity person in my comments. So, having said that, I go to three point five dot two nine dot six A, and just, and let's just all work through it. And realize that we're here because I've, that some people have told me mistakes were made and whatnot. We're, we're a city that hopefully has kindness in our heart, that we can just do the right thing and move on. So, so whatever mistakes were made, I'm not particularly caring about that. I just want to fight going forward so that when another property owner, or a, or a business owner looks at his property, or looks at his or her bottom line and says, man, I could do a little better if I could have cafe dining out on the sidewalk, or I could use public property for personal use, they want to feel good about that. And, and that those business owners who didn't step forward because they feel that there's some sort of unfairness or, or retribution that comes to business owners that step up, I'm speaking for them. You know, let's just, let's just make it right. So, you know, and, and let's make it fair and good for everyone. So, having said that, let's look at it. It's our sidewalk before, before the wood walk. Now, that I'm always going to have a problem with. If we just merely tore up the wood walk that was there, we'd have a sidewalk that people could walk through. And it was on the list, maybe, I'm not even sure, of sidewalks to be fixed to ADA, just like about five, ten, fifteen, twenty other dozen sidewalk areas that needed to be fixed. So, I think we could continue to live with what we have. But even saying that, we are where we are. And I look at the rules, and I look at that cafe rule that we've talked about. Sidewalk cafes shall not, shall be located in a, in such a manner that a minimum width of five feet, we all know what five feet is, I measured the workaround area- feet," we all know what five feet is, I measured the workaround area, and it doesn't go five feet, so we can't count that as the, the area. And it's maintained at all times, and we all know what the word "all" means, that means constantly, at all times, as in unobstructed, and of course, "un" is the opposite of obstructed. I think anybody would reasonably say that a wall would be an obstruction, and I don't think any reasonable person can tell me that a wall does not obstruct something. So our rules say that sidewalk cafe shall be located in such a manner that a minimum width of five feet is maintained at all times as an unobstructed pedestrian path. Now, I'm reminded of the Merchant of Venice, you know, a pound of flesh but not a drop of blood, if somebody could figure out a way to make that happen, I would shut up. Okay, but I cannot, no matter what sort of mathematical flips I do, no matter what way I measure and re-measure and figure and re-figure, I cannot make our existing code good. Now, I heard, heard about how we have to work on our code and make it better. I'll tell you, I, I personally get to visit our magistrate for a code violation. Now, I can drive up and down the streets of the city, and I've taken pictures of others who've done the exact same thing I have. Now, I'm not going to be able to use that defense in front of the magistrate to explain why I had a trailer parked in front of my property, I hope the magistrate says, "Your deal is your deal." So this rule sits on our books right now. And our job, and I, I did this, and I know we, you know, all swore to uphold the rules of the city, and this is the rule right now. So I don't, I can't, I just cannot get past that, that was the rule. Now, aside from aesthetics, aside from the fact that I think it's a junky wall, I think that there's no handrail, that when you walk along it, your hand starts at twenty-three inches, rises up to thirty-nine, that's not in the spirit of ADA, I'm not sure it is, legally might be okay. I know that a wall that has texture to it isn't in the spirit of ADA, that you want to make it as smooth as possible. And there's drainage issues, I mean, the only drainage, which was, had to be modified from a cylindrical approach to a flat one, because it couldn't handle the flow rate, doesn't handle everything. In fact, that is drainage on private property, there's no public sign drainage on that wall system. So in, in its totality, it's just wrong, it's just plain wrong. And I'm, and I'm not angry at anybody, and I just want it to be nice, and I don't want my city that I live in to go down any sort of particular road, and I'm sure all, all of us feel that way. But I think, you know, I don't want to blame or whatever, as I've said, I just want it to be right. So let's look at a rule, let's apply a rule. So if it's tear down that wall, let's do it. If we need to put in sidewalk, whatever, or stairs to amend that, let's do it. I mean, it, it's, it's something that's tearing the city apart, getting people upset, it's unnecessary, and I think that concludes my comments for now. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Ms. Hayes, the property in question, you worked with the owners, you followed what is our documented procedure, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the owners and property, the proprietor plus the property owners worked with you throughout it all, everything that was done there was done based on the direction of the city?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is what was approved?
Yes, ma'am.
So our issue appears to be going back and looking at the ordinance, and whether or not we need changes to it. But what has been done was done based on what was approved by the authorities within the city.
Yes, ma'am.
And having been here for thirty-five years, I've watched the city adjust all over downtown, and one of the reasons I asked to see the other things is, as there are different issues to be addressed, different options were looked at in order to meet the documented standards required by the feds for ADA, and what we can and can't do and the options, and options were chosen. We did the first three phases of Streetscape, some of the areas we're talking about tonight would have been part of follow-up phases that council chose not to continue with, so those areas haven't been addressed. I remember correctly, it is?
Well, Alexander would have been phase four.
Alexander was phase four, and that would have been from fifth to third, no, fifth to fourth, because we did fourth to third. Baker would have been a part of one of the phases, which was related to earlier, I believe, by Mr. Masterson, from third to fifth, because we had a number of issues there that weren't addressed. And then Fifth Avenue, which has significant ADA issues from Donley to Fourth.
That's correct.
On the far side, and those haven't been done yet, and yet, we expect visitors and people to use them, uh, people meaning us residents, use them, and they really are not up to standard.
That's correct.
So I believe, I, I disagree, you know, with all respect, Mr. Slavy, I like the wall, I believe it is, it matches what has been developed over time for the rest of that street. It is not odd from that street. If you want to look at some things that probably could be challenged as being different than what one end of a street is to the other, go to the other side of Alexander from fourth to third, and look at the awning that is across the sidewalk and things. And again, I'm not criticizing it, I'm just relating that different options were looked at in order to address cooperatively between the city and the property owners, which is a different property owner, and if you go around to Third Street, it's a different property owner, to work with them to make the property more usable and improve safety to residents and visitors, both from an ADA standpoint and from a flow of just crowds. So I think our issue as a council is a policy issue, and it goes back to looking, moving forward, looking at what it is we want, and enforcing, and I guess what, I, I, you know, Mr. Slavy, you refer to a number of restaurants, residents upset. I believe that there'll need to be a process, whatever we choose to do, to include all the business owners who presently have the cafes and do what they do, because it probably does make a significance to them. And if we are going to change it, we should be getting input from them, because it is their livelihood. And to me, it's also part of the ambiance of Mount Door. People, when they visit Mount Door, and even I as a resident, enjoy the outdoor dining, the outdoor atmosphere that we have, and, and yes, we have to be careful to navigate sometimes. You know, we are a city that's a hundred and seven years old, and it was built with narrow roads and things, and now, here we are in two thousand and seventeen, trying to make it a, a walkable town, and also provide opportunities for businesses to be successful, so that we don't have the conversations that I can remember in the last ten years of all the empty storefronts. Yes, we have empty storefronts, but it appears more and more they're filling up differently, faster, and also different businesses are relocating, as we've seen with the, the latest move apparently of, of Mr. Sivich, he's going to the old lost parrot. But that's good, that's good. And I'm sure part of that attraction is the fact that that hits the open window some things, but I'll stop there and reserve the right if I need to later, but.
I have a couple of questions, and one I don't think has ever been answered, with the wall itself.
Turn on your mic.
Turn on the mic.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. With the building construction of the wall, and you bring it up to ADA requirements for the sidewalk, what were the other options? What could we have done? Could that sidewalk could be brought up to ADA standards without that wall being built?
We did look at, we did look at that, and I'll actually turn the technical over to Mr. Peters in a second, but I'm going to take it from a broad approach for a moment, and then I'll let him skinny it down to, to the details, but, you know, we looked at the slope, and I believe it's fifteen percent plus, if I, if I remember in my reports, the slope was fifty percent?
Oh, the section.
Yes, sections of it. So again, if we were to.
Slope where?
The slope from the entrance on the driveway, on the, I believe we took from, really from Bavarian area down to the area below the second driveway, so Bavarian through driveway, through the, through the Giovanni's.
Was that the national grade of the hill?
That was the grade of, of that slope area, that's correct. It was around fifteen percent from.
Well, let me, let me clarify, if you were going southbound on Alexander, you would go by four twenty-five, and if you leave the property going to that southern driveway, there was a drop-off that exceeded eight percent, which under ADA, you could do eight point three three percent with handrail, difference and exception to that, we never measured it in terms of fifteen percent. The cross-slope on the back of curb to the sidewalk area was over fifteen percent, so the fifteen percent exceeded the two percent cross-slope allowed by ADA. So we had two problems, we had the problem of people exiting their vehicle onto a slope that was fifteen percent or more, and then we had the problem, as you left the property into the second driveway, we had a slope there that exceeded eight point three three percent, but what a handrail would have worked, but ideally five percent, which does not require handrail. So we would have to have done some significant work to get to five percent through the restaurant area. So we had a situation where we had excessive side slopes by the parking area. The, the code is very specific about tables not interfering with people's ability to get in and out of their car. So when they had their original wooden deck, they were right up against the parking spaces.
Well, that was a city issue that should never have approved then.
Right, but the point is, we looked at multiple options. One of the things that's been brought up this evening is the five-foot requirement. If you read the cafe ordinance in totality, what we're talking about is the accessibility of pedestrians to get through the cafe area, which is food traffic, and that is between the tables. And so you have to have five feet between the tables in order to get the traffic through. The determination we made was that if we provided a food sidewalk that met the four-foot requirement, then it was separate from the cafe, and as long as they had five feet within the cafe, we were fine. So that was part of that review. So we actually have two different walkways we're talking about. Now, the code is very specific, that existing sidewalk, four-foot minimum, we had other places in downtown where we had ADA ramps to the four feet, separate from a five-foot sidewalk, because the ADA compliant part had to be at least thirty-six inches, but our curb required minimum four foot on existing sidewalks. So that was all part of that whole decision-making process, it was not an easy site. I would also point out that we have worked with multiple property owners during the construction, we had places that did not call for a wall, but once we started constructing it, we had tripages, and the choice was either rail or wall, where we had walls on the whole street, so we elected the wall that continued the appearance, as opposed to putting a rail in. So we had done, it's unfortunate, we had done in multiple places in downtown, modification to accommodate property owners, this was just one unfortunately, that I think everybody, attention was drawn to it when they put the wooden decks in, and so then, you know, everybody was focused on it, and, you know, I believe we had met the requirements of the cafe ordinance, we met the requirements of ADA. The property owner erred when he put the round pipe in the wall, I had told him prior to that he needed to put a rectangular opening, so there would be enough room for the drains you get through, since he put the rectangular opening, there had not been a problem that I'm aware of, so, you know, we, we stand by what we did.
All right, that's my first question. My second question is pretty simple, and it'll go to the city attorney. With the section that Councilman Slavy referenced, is the wall in violation of the city code?
No.
No?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm giving this to you. Can I follow? No, that's, that was my question, Mr. Olson.
Thank you, I want to make some just random comments based upon the reading of the extensive documents that were supplied there on the agenda, and based on what I heard and what I've seen personally. I want to thank our manager, and Mr. Peters, and whoever else participated, and this, I know there were others, in all the detail that was supplied, that is, that was an exceptional, to me, to be personally eye-opening analysis to see all that. And we've all walked those streets where the photos are shown on these pages, most of us have, I'm assuming, and it validates much of our thinking that we've got problems in what will be phase four and five, that need to be seriously and as soon as possible addressed. I agree with Ms. Hoakes that when this, these phases come on board, as the envisioning process has urged us to do back in two thousand and eleven, those issues will certainly be addressed and finalized in appropriate fashion, but until then, we have to deal with, I imagine, some patching and fixing and, and jittering, as it were. I heard the word collusion from somebody, that's the last thing I believe has happened, is collusion. That's a, that's a word that if you don't have the facts to speculate that there's collusion, I think is dangerous. And so I would urge people that don't know for sure to refrain from making allegations that are at least inappropriate and if not, dangerous. There are, there were other management options for this wall, apparently as I've heard, and various options they spelled them on. What I'm taking away from Mr. Slavy's comments are good, and I agree with those, that we need going forward to look at our ordinances, every single one that deals with all these issues. And I support that idea, we should always be modifying and looking at and analyzing as time changes our ordinances. And so this is clearly someplace, and I support that, and I would, I would hope the council would agree to task somebody, some group of people, person to do that, and bring it back to us with appropriate changes. But to suggest, you know my bent, and you're going to hear it, you've heard it before and you'll hear it again, I do not want to make decisions on whether walls should be smooth or stuck with. I don't think that's my job, I don't think that's, in my view, that's his council job, any more than it is to micromanage the manager in other areas that happen from time to time. So I, they made a decision, it was a management decision, I support the decision, because it was management's decision, and they knew all of the facts, and I'm a second-hand, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a manager, maybe think I could manage, but I think I'd be pretty dangerous if I tried. So I think we better be careful about stepping into professional areas that are so technical, we might like something else, we might like a smooth wall versus a stuck with wall, but if that's the case, we should say, "Well, I wish it would be smoother and not stuck with," but I'll have to live with what's there. Otherwise, we supplant the skill sets we have trusted over the years to guide us from a management standpoint. The, I think, I think it was Mr. Masterson that correctly talked about ADA issues, I would never call them excessive ADA issues, because as a former safety manager, as he stated, ADA issues are pretty important, as I've said in previous council meetings, you do not want to get crosswise with FDA violations, trust me, you do not. And so attending to those ADA issues was crucial to me in having to do that, that wouldn't bench what cafe were sitting, was far from ADA compliant, was dangerous, people getting off those tables, I could see, and you can just visualize a cartoon of somebody tripping as they go down. So I'm, I'm glad that was changed, I support the changes, I think it makes it far excessively better, excessively better, and aesthetically better to have that. If you. If you, everybody can look and probably has looked at all the photos that are there. The city is in desperate need to make some of those changes. Whether it will be done through the Phase Four and Phase Five process, which I certainly think is valid, that's fine. If it needs to, from an urgent standpoint, be corrected more promptly than that will allow because of a lot of money, money issues drive those phases, then we should do it. And it should apply to all merchants that deal with that. So I don't think this city singles out one merchant for any favoritism. I know there's some anti-main street leasing here. And it's all I've heard is main street leasing, main street leasing. And it seems to me as an event that some have to explain, to criticize what was done to try to correct it, but that's not for me to say. The decision was management's decision. Either we are managers and have to be involved in everything in detail. If that's the case, Gianni's situation would still be in the discussion process and we would be waiting for another year because we would all have different ideas. So I support the process, I support what the management, management, I might have had some different, in fact, I would have had some different ideas if I were the manager. I'd say, well, I think we should do this like Mr. Slavy suggested. I'm not the manager, I don't want that role. I don't think this council should have this role, and I think it's dangerous, dangerous to do so and risky. So I like it. I have heard comments, some of you have heard negative comments about it. I've heard many positive comments about that. About time, quote unquote, was one of the comments I heard. It looks great. So I guess there's good, bad, and ugly in just about every decision that's made. And I want to emphasize, as Ms. Hoakes has emphasized, that there are some good things about what they've happened. Thank you for your time.
Pardon, Ms. Wilson. I would, I would suggest that we need to seriously look at the timetable for the next phases because I believe this is just the first of a number of things that will come out because we haven't addressed the rest of the project that needs to be done downtown that deals with the different issues of sidewalks and other things. So I would hope that we look at it a little differently than just keep pushing it back because these are not going to go away. And the longer we wait, the more challenges we're going to have. I would suggest that at that time, when we do the Phase Four Alexander from Fourth to Fifth, that if that area needs to be looked at, it could be looked at then because if I'm hearing correctly, the owner and everyone that was, everything that was done there was done in line with what is on our books now to be done based on a decision made by our city manager, which I do agree with Mr. Wilson and a number of people have heard me say this, and I'll say it, and I've said it to the city manager. We pay her a hundred and eighty thousand a year, a little less, including benefits, to do her job. We all had the debate as to whether or not she had the experience or not, but I believe she's come in in gangbusters and she's doing a very thorough job. And I think the document she gave us, which I know since she wasn't here during any of it, she was dependent on other people to pull the legal documents that are out there because everything we do as a city is in public record, it is out there. And I think she did do a yeoman's job in doing it. I do think we need to enforce the sidewalk cafe policy as it's written after we have conversation with the restaurants. Because yes, you give a little, they take a little more because everyone's trying to survive economically. And I'm sure they've found that on certain times. And I know when you look at the festivals and things, all those seats outside are full. And there are definitely areas, and we've all seen them, that they've tried to get the extra chairs out of there. And I think we need to have that conversation and get it back to what the ordinance says and then look at that and say, okay, are we, is this what we want? And if it's not, then what changes do we make? And we take it through a process for review. And I also believe that we need to look at and/or clearly define what are the involvements of the different advisory committees we have so that there's not a question of where people think they should or shouldn't be involved. What are the involvements and have it done very clearly so people understand.
Okay, well, I have some more thoughts. So I'm going to differ with Ms. Hoakes that her statement that the city standards and rules were followed, because I don't think they were. If I look at the sidewalk cafe ordinance, paragraph one, I'm sorry, paragraph three, it says sidewalk cafe means seating located on a sidewalk or pedestrian mall, which is associated with an adjacent eating and or drinking establishment and so forth. If you have a wall there that impedes the movement of a human being on their two feet, walking or in a wheelchair or walker, whatever, you no longer have a sidewalk. What we have is an enclosed patio. I agree with Mr. Slavy in that I have no, I have no, I have no issue with any specific business downtown. This would have upset me had this been Santa's workshop, and I know I've told Ms. Hayes that before. My, one of my questions is, if the ADA compliance was so critical for this section of sidewalk, why didn't we do all of Alexander? To me, this just seems that this restaurant wanted additional tables. They started with three tables outside on the, you know, right up against their wall. They submitted plans for this decking, which was very similar to the decking that you see outside Cecile's and the opening area of Pisces. And that was, that's another question, what about that? Is that not a trepasser, that decking? I haven't heard anything about that, you know, being, needing to go down. So let me back up. This was initially, I think, the main thrust of this was to help provide additional seating for this specific business. When the wooden decking was determined not to be feasible for the variety of reasons that it was not, and I agree that it was, you know, it was a trepasser and it also impinged an awful lot into the, into the outside of the public sidewalk. Although one could traverse in between these two decks, plenty of room to do that, that at that point, that decking should have come down, come out. Us as the city should have said, hey, we've got some serious ADA drainage or whatever issues, and we need to address them now. Let's address them and then we will come back and work with you to see what we can accommodate in the way of a sidewalk cafe for you. Remember that just because we have a, an ordinance that permits sidewalk cafes, it does not mean that every business is entitled to one. It depends on the layout of the land, so to speak. I don't believe that five feet within an enclosed patio area really means anything. There are seven tables in there. There's not five feet in between those, in any of those tables. I believe that it's my job, and it's my job as an elected representative and the job of the city employees to be looking out for the public good, for the, for the good management stewardship of our public assets, including our sidewalks, our streets, everything that, that, you know, makes Mount Dora a wonderful place to live, work, and play. And I feel that we have not, we have not done the public right by this. And I do agree that I think we should look at our codes. I also think that although I read in the memo that the intent is not, I want to read this out loud here, but, sorry. That the commercial business has no assumed or implied ownership of these sidewalk improvements, including the wall. And my, I'm nodding my head, yes, but, that awful three-letter word. This will stay forever as nobody's going to remember five or 10 years from now that that originally was public sidewalk. And I'd like to see a inventory of all of the public assets, especially in the downtown area, so that as we go forward with future streetscape improvements, that we recognize that if we are utilizing some of that public space, you know, what public space we're utilizing? Are we ceding any of that to individual business owners or property owners? Just think that this was not, not done in the best interest of all of the residents of Mount Dora. So that's, I'm done for now.
Thank you. So I've got a question for our attorney. So the question is, and it's vocabulary, and a minimum width of five feet is to be maintained at all times as an unobstructed pedestrian path. So I guess, and maybe it's to you as management, I have yet to see a drawing, a picture, a measurement of anything that would make me believe that there is a, an area of minimum width of five feet which is maintained, and, and, you know, I understand at all times, but even at this moment, and as an unobstructed pedestrian path. So what I'm seeing is, I'm open to the idea that you could, you could work around it by saying that that path on the outside is a five foot. And I would shut up because I'd say, hey, you know, that's five feet, it's unobstructed, you can get through that. But I measured it, and it's not five feet. And I'd be glad if someone else wants to say, you know, I measured wrong, glad. But I'm pretty confident that I know what fifty-seven inches is. And I, you know, one spot, it might be less somewhere else. It's not sixty inches. Please, if there is, I will shut up. But, but there isn't. So I just need someone to, for the citizens, because I mean, someone that's listening to my words, just simply the words, five feet unobstructed for pedestrian. It's not there. If we had it, we'd be done, but we don't have it. So we've got an ordinance here that we choose to not enforce. Well, I'm gonna, if the mayor's gonna allow it, because I know this has been pushed around on title, I'm gonna make a motion, ask someone to actually enforce the code that we have on books. Because it seems like we have just an overall lack of desire to enforce what we have on books. Now, if I'm, if I'm wrong in this, I'm glad to be corrected. But, but I'm gonna walk out of here tonight, and everyone else is gonna measure this. And everyone else is gonna say, Slavy, it's less than five feet. What the hell are you doing up there? It says that there's supposed to be a minimum width of five feet maintained at all times as an unobstructed pedestrian path. So I've said it like seventeen times. Please, somebody shut me up with some facts so that I can just let this issue go. Because I, I am glad to let management manage. They want to put a stuckled wall, they want to put a wall, you know, whatever, it doesn't matter. But right now, we're really doing a disservice to the citizens. And so anyway, could someone please answer that? I don't look at it as a gotcha question, I look at it as a softball. Find me five feet and I'll shut up.
Well, I don't, I believe it's more of a, like you said, factual. I can interpret for you what the code says.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you. I can interpret for you what the code says. I can't interpret for you what the facts are on the scene.
That's fair.
Right. Now, that is, you did bring up earlier what the city code says in one spot, ADA standards three feet, city code's four feet, new city code development's five feet, sidewalk cafes expanded it a little bit more for five feet. It's being a little more stringent in cafe. But the cafe ordinance, sorry. Now, it does say unobstructed pedestrian path. Based on me viewing that, I haven't been out there personally on the scene. I haven't taken measurements myself. What I can interpret for you is what the code says. It doesn't say unobstructed pedestrian thoroughfare. It does just say path. That would be my only legal interpretation of what I've seen in the code. Now, factually, that's more of a staff response.
Is, right, because to follow up, they could move the tables side to side, creating a five-foot path. And I'm gonna take your logic, or what I interpret that is, that as long as there's a five-foot path inside the patio area that stops at the wall, there's five foot clear, that would meet the requirement.
That's all I'm reading, a minimum width of five feet maintained.
Right. And then, and I understand we're on rescind over whether the wall is, is part of that. But at the minimum, I think anyone would agree. That even walking down from the Bavarian Restaurant down that path, you cannot with a, you know, take a stick five foot and walk through there, you're gonna hit something. So at that moment, even there, we're not in compliance. So that would be one. And then I am, I am concerned about, you know, while, while I understand your definition of a path, I think my layman's, you know, is low one. You know, and I, I didn't, you know, but, but keep in mind, Abraham Lincoln had less formal training than me even. Unobstructed pedestrian path. I mean, when we wrote that code, you think we really meant that it would be a path that would stop at a wall and that you could look over and see the sidewalk down further? I just don't, I just don't.
Just something you may want to address in code.
Right, okay, that would be fine. Well, I still think then we have a problem with the five feet maintained at all times of the way the tables are.
Again, I think we gave you several pictures that we can do the same thing everywhere, we can be consistent, and we can apply that. That's never a question, something that we would apply. So we would get through the entire downtown and look at that from a process base so that we are fair and equitable as we are with everything else. So I have no issue with that. If we need to go and measure that and do the same thing, we can do that. So I, that's not an issue that we, if we haven't done that, we will do that again.
Well, I guess, I should probably try to wrap this up, but I'd like to make a motion. Am I legally able to make a motion on this discussion item? Actually, I'd like to make two motions.
It was, we did change it to a discussion item rather than what I'm saying on the agenda.
Yes, I did.
All right, well, I would, I move that, that this cafe permit needs to comply with our existing code until such time as that code is revised and that it be fixed by one October so that it complies with opening the, so that it complies in however, whatever method the current city management feels will address the issue, however they want to do it. But I think that by October first, the wall, that, that section of sidewalk needs to comply with the five-foot clearance that the code requires. Is that garbled enough?
Can we get a read back or understand, can you?
Pardon? Can I, should I?
I can read it if you want.
Yes.
Does it, or my question is pointed, does that include then removal of the, the path inhibiting wall?
It, it, it only, no, it doesn't. There's, I think that there are other ways that that could be accomplished without removal of the wall. So no, that does not. And I'm not an engineer, but, I mean, I can, I'd like to see that path restored. Under five foot clearance.
Second.
I oppose the motion for these reasons. The sidewalk cafe ordinances, we have several that apply here, I believe, are our policy responsibility. And that's our policy part. The staff carries out, carries that out, and that's the management's. The staff carries out, carries that out, and that's the management's responsibility. Now, I'm not licensed in Florida, never hoped to be as an attorney, but my understanding is, compliance, compliance issues, the courts typically add in front of that the word reasonable compliance, and if, and if, if it's 57 inches, as I understand Mr. Sladey said, and it's essentially three inches short, that may well be seen by, as reasonable compliance. Number two, uh, when the, when the wall was built and you're now walking around that, I question whether or not that is, has to be five feet, and it shouldn't be four feet. Because it's a sidewalk, and the cafe is inside there, because we've diverted it, or the staff has diverted that. So maybe only 48 inches is required. I don't know that. But to vote on, essentially, saying management did a poor job, or saying management did not do things correctly, management, you're holding responsible because we know more than management does about that because of the three inches, or whatever the issues are, I think it's a big, big mistake. Um, I have no problem with studying the ordinances, making the changes requiring compliance in the future, but they've done a job, and I think they've done a reasonably good job, and a responsible job, and I oppose this as, as Sunday morning, Monday morning quarterbacking.
Okay. Um, well, see, I think that that patio has negated the definition of a sidewalk cafe. A sidewalk cafe means seating located on a sidewalk. So if you, if you, if you have closed off that sidewalk and restricted public access to that sidewalk, then it is no longer a sidewalk. It is a patio that has used public sidewalk for the sole benefit of one individual business. And I think that that's part of policy, um, that, that we do have a right to, to comment on or to, to, um, recommend that, that, uh, compliance with that. So that's my comments on that.
Mr. Tullit, um, you know, I usually don't, and I've been around for a little while in these different things, and I've been through a lot of different boards, you know, where boards get accused of micromanaging, and it's one thing I don't ever agree that a board or council should ever get involved in, especially when you have a situation, this was a, a different type of, um, of a, um, of a council, or a city charter type thing, where council was solely in charge of everything. And I would probably agree, and it's our responsibility to make these kind of changes. We rely a lot on our city manager to do the work the city manager has to do. And, uh, and I have faith in, in some of the things that they do. Now, have mistakes, or mistakes made at times? Yes, mistakes do get made at times. But we started off this whole conversation tonight with, let's move forward. And here we are going backwards, okay? And there's absolutely no way that I could, um, that there's things that we need to do, granted, and with some different reviews and looking at this, and looking at different policies and procedures. But to go with that kind of a motion, to go, that we're talking about going backwards and possibly ripping down walls, doing different things, going through the whole city like gangbusters, measuring every little thing that we have, and disrupting every business and restaurant that we have downtown, I don't think is a prudent thing at this point in time. Um, I, I cannot support this motion at this point.
Mayor?
Yes. Well, I'm disappointed, or, the other council members should be able to speak first, if you want to.
Yeah, I don't know that going backwards, or I wanna move forward as much as we can. I don't wanna criticize the city manager, because I'm not here to do that, I'm not here to micromanage at all. But what I do notice is just in the pictures that we were shown in part of our attachment, pages 501 to about 520. Half of these problems we created. Some merchant didn't run out there and build a patio, or a wall, or anything else out there that's now, we have to fix. We did that. At some point, we, previous councils, previous city managers, previous department heads, put their heads together and came up with the wrong decision. There's planner boxes out there that the merchants didn't build, we built them. And now all of a sudden, you can't get a corridor open. We have made errors in the past. I don't wanna make any errors going forward. We have to come to a decision tonight. I trust our city manager more. The judgment used here, I think, was, had some technical errors in it. We may have to live with it. Now, we may have to live with it. That wall, I find nothing redeeming about it. I don't think as, you know, it's not quite five feet, and I can live with it not being 57 inches. I'm not gonna, as you said, Mr. Rawson, I think there's a good shot at it, you know, getting there. I think the judge would rule on that, it's 57 versus 60. But at some point in time, we've gotta move forward, and we gotta watch what we're doing. Things have to be decided a little better, and not micromanaging, I'm not here to micromanage. Like I said, just look at these pictures, and we created that mess out there. So if we have to move forward, we're gonna move forward. But it's had a bitter, bitter taste.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, 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 wow. Um, so today I learned a lot. Today I learned a path can have a wall in the middle of it. Today I learned that, um, that it seems that discussion sometimes is that we're not here as a board to oversee. That to question the management is some sort of a front. As people who would know history know, I was a big advocate for hiring their city manager, and I support her. Um, and I, I know that she is not perfect, um, and that by definition, except mistakes can be made. I'm not pointing fingers, it doesn't matter. But gosh golly, and I'll get in trouble for saying that. This is wrong. I support the motion, the idea that citizens' property should be available for all the citizens. How will we get around to that? We gotta fix. And if we wanna get into semantics, great. If we wanna get into, there is no problem large enough that we can ever question our city manager? Well, I can't, I can't go there. There, there's always gonna be a level, because there's seven of us, something will reach. Mr. Rawson had a concern with the billing of the attorney. He wanted it in, uh, smaller increments. I thought it was frivolous, but you know what? He had the right to make that decision because he thought it was important. This motion made by Ms. Tullit is to try to protect citizens' property from individual use and take it away. I don't know exactly if this is a great motion. I don't know what it is, but we gotta fix it. And, and we're gonna walk away here tonight unless we do something with property that is now going to be used in a way that gives value of some way, whether it's de facto or schoolyard, um, law school way. But kicking away property, and, and it's unfortunate that it's one property owner, because, I'll tell you, I, when people come to me and talk about certain property owners, I remember, um, getting with Mr. Pastoo to make sure that all the building permits were online, because I really wanted to shut up all the people who were coming to me saying certain people were getting breaks, because they weren't. So again, it's not about, it's not about some particular group here. It's about the fact that, I, I guess I'm, I'm just at a loss for understanding how we can do this to ourselves. So anyway, I support the motion, because I think it's an attempt to right a wrong. There's no malice, there's no anger, there's no axe to grind. I just want, in the end, five, 10, 20 years from now, our scene to be accessible to everybody, walkable, and, uh, available. So anyway, I support the motion.
Well, I'm sure you can guess that I do not support the motion. I believe everything was done in good faith. I believe that should we try, because I do see it as a step back, I believe then we need to look all around town, and I could probably come up with four or five other properties, that there's significant things that will need to be taken down if we're going to be fair to everyone. And one of them is a project that's in the works right now. There are a lot of things that don't have the look of perhaps what we want. I think our focus does need to be on ADA, and I will repeat myself. I believe we're dealing with this because we chose not to continue with a well-thought-out plan of six phases to deal with downtown and all of the different issues. And I really believe we as a council need to seriously look at what we're talking about, the timing of the other phases, whatever they turn out to be. Because if you will recall, they started out as six or seven phases, I'm not sure, and some of them were adjusted as we moved along to pull in different pieces because certain things were found, especially over on Third Avenue. Um, so I would strongly encourage us, as we're going through CIP, that we relook at that, because we do have issues. Um, and, um, you could just go across the street at Segway and look at the issues there. I mean, I think we'll barely get 36 inches in some spots there. So, you know, we can't just look at one place, even though this has surfaced to be the issue. Um, so I would rather, um, I will not support the motion. I believe in my vision of moving forward, what has been done has been done, whether some people think it's a mistake or not. Um, I understand, and I kept asking this from the first time this was brought up, were the proprietor and the, um, property owner following the direction we as a city were giving? And they were. Whether it was right or wrong, they were following. So I believe we leave that alone, and we accelerate looking at the phases, and perhaps one of the main ones that needs to be looked at early then would be Alexander from Fifth to Fourth, because both sides of the street have issues. And from there, I'm gonna go again, I'm repeating myself, I'm gonna go with the record. Fifth Avenue from Donnelly to Fourth. Those are significant. And, um, you know, one of the things people talk about a lot, I mean, let's just put it all on the table of, well, those stores over there are never rented. It's almost impossible for that owner to rent them because of the issues the city hasn't taken care of, which is the sidewalks there, in my opinion. Y'all may not agree with that, but, um, those of us, a number of us who walk downtown a lot and do it as an exercise, I don't walk that one anymore, because it's just not comfortable, because it needs to be addressed, and it doesn't need to be addressed in 2021 or '22. It needs to be addressed in the next 12 to 18 months of getting the next design and understanding what needs to be there. So I won't, I can't support the particular motion as it's fifth percent.
Mrs. Rawson, now I'm gonna go ahead and answer the other one question.
As a point of order, we had a motion made, isn't the public, uh, we able to?
I had the public come up ahead of time.
Right, yeah, but it's not on the motion. So as a point of order, it's been the board's, um, policy that when we have a motion, that, um, the, the court discusses it, then the chair opens it up to public comment to the specific motion, and it comes back to council. I mean, we've done it hundreds of times.
I know we've done that hundreds of times, but that's why I had the discussion headed this for the public, but we can't do that, that's not, that's, you know, that's the council's prerogative to do it, that's fine, but that's why I had to do the other things, so.
And I agree, but I mean, we have a specific motion on the floor now, not just a general comment.
The discussion had led to other thoughts that weren't on the table.
This is our discussion, thank you.
It's up to the chair who's leading the meeting. You are legally required to have public input on it once. Up to you.
And I'm the kind of guy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, um, um, go ahead and rule with the, they're gonna allow the public if they want to, we're on the side of caution, and that's, that's a proper phrase, and let them, if anybody wants to speak in addition to the motion that's on hand, and to, um, lengthy motion, but if anybody wants to address that motion, feel free to come up and address the motion.
Thank you, Mayor, that was kind of me.
This is Annabato, 541 East Fifth Avenue. I'm finding it difficult to believe that we're even discussing this again. And talk about needing to move forward, yes, that's exactly what we need to do. I've watched this thing develop from the get-go, because I walk, uh, with somebody, and we pass by it and pass by it and pass by it. And I have to tell you, when we talk about, um, that we're taking something away from the citizens, since this wall got built, it has never impeded our progress to get from Fifth Avenue to Fourth Avenue. So I don't know what we've taken away from the citizens. And unless somebody is 60 inches wide waddling down that sidewalk, they're not gonna bump into anything trying to veer off of two steps to the left to get through there. We've heard people say that everything, I think we heard councils say that everything was done according to code. If that's the case, then to think that we are revisiting this after something has been done to code, and what is wrong with Gianni's trying to expand the number of tables so that we can have a viable business, more viable, in the city of Mount Dora? That's why we've allowed other restaurants to have chairs out on the sidewalk. That's the public sidewalk, just like, who cares if it's a sidewalk or a pathway? I'm sitting back here listening to this for however long it's been going on, thinking, who cares? I mean, let's just move forward. The thing is not offensive. We've got bigger problems in this city than Gianni's wall. And when this whole thing started, I was incredibly offended by the fact that there was, there were publications telling people to go to TripAdvisor and say that Gianni's was a bad restaurant. How crazy are we that we are trying to, uh, upset and diminish a restaurant or any other business in this community? I mean, that is absolutely nuts. My first thought as a registered nurse was whoever did that didn't have enough brains, their brain cells were so far apart, it had a thought process that would electrocute them. I've never seen anything like that in my life, it was ridiculous. So I think we need to, I, I hear enough votes against this motion, I hope it fails, and let's just move forward.
Kimari, 1224 Board Normandy. Originally, in the beginning, I put my three cents in, or three minutes in, discussing how we need ordinance changes. And yes, we do need the ordinance changes, we do need to have them look in. But the motion that you have on the table right now can affect every single restaurant downtown, including taking the columns up from underneath of One Flight Up, taking the columns down, down here on Baker. Think before you act, because the things that you're talking about doing can have detrimental effects down here. Has it even gone through the city attorney's office, any of it? Has it been reviewed to see if we're gonna conform with city, state, county, or federal laws? Because if you're acting on something like this without going through the city attorney and having them review it and everything else, you could be making a grave mistake. One that's gonna cost us tons of money.
Good evening, Tina Garcia, 699 East Fifth Avenue. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm an attorney who actually specializes in governmental municipal law. Typically, I'm representing the governmental entity, so this is very fun for me to be at these meetings. Um, I would just like to remind the board and everyone in the public that at all times, the property owner complied with the city, um, the city procedures, worked with staff, got the proper permits. Um, I just warn everyone that a motion such as this could be down to a slippery slope and path, second guessing the city manager and their staff's responsibilities and the duties that they have done. Um, I believe that this motion could be good procedurally improper. It assumes the fact that they are not in compliance already, could be a potential violation of due process, and, um, raises detrimental reliance issues that the property owner who has gone through this for a very long time now and has relied on the city staff and their representations, this could lead to impacts to them and their business entities and other business entities throughout downtown Mount Dora. And the appropriate little council is extremely competent. I'm sure you can listen to their decision, um, their advice as to how to proceed on this matter. Thank you.
That was Yaski from 1024 East Fifth. There's a ton of us that care, that's who cares. And I just don't care that how a wall in a public right-of-way is okay. There's no right-of-way anymore, it's gone. We have to take a sharp left and a sharp right to get around this wall that wasn't there before. It's a public right-of-way. Now it's a private piece of property, basically, that we can't get through. We can clamber over it, but it's not the public right-of-way. We can clamber over it, but it's not the public way. That's the case.
Jan Stiegiore to a Port North Tremaine Street. I'm really, really upset whoever made this decision has the power to take it away also. That when you're talking about code, when you're talking about a few inches, it matters. Maybe you're not five feet wide, but if you have a wheelchair, it's not real flexible. And I know a friend went down there and tried to get through, and actually, we had to shift her and spoodle her a little here and there, and it was terrible. And I know for sure that it is not five feet, it is less than that. We went down, an engineer went down with us, it is not. And it is so wrong. I was brought up, there is no right way to do a wrong thing, and this is so, so wrong.
Tom Cutshaw again, 346 East Sixth Avenue, Mount Dora. I just, the whole thing boggles the mind. Number one, from what I'm hearing, it wasn't done to code or to our ordinances. That's the first thing. You took my sidewalk. So I live in historic downtown Mount Dora. The property's only 50 feet wide. So I'm here, I can, what I wanna do is build a wall out over my sidewalk and put my hammock and Weber grill, that'll give me another couple hundred square feet of property. Should I start ordering the lumber? I don't know, I'm thinking, yeah. And I'm thinking, too, the future of Alexander, if you're talking about the ADA and you gotta do both sides of it. Well, so you start doing that, then what's the impact on Gianni's that's already done? When you go down the whole west side of the street, they have to redo that because of something back on Donnelly, heading south? It just seems to me y'all are making a whole bunch of even worse mistakes going forward. So I would hope you would think seriously about what you're about to do. But thank you, appreciate it.
Mike Masterson, 7887 Crosswind Way. Ms. Hope made an important comment early on. She said, "You give them a little, an inch, they take a, they take a little inch, then they take a foot," and et cetera. I guess my comment would be this. If we go back to the original implementation of the cafe ordinance at Gianni's, I believe it was stated, and no one's argued the point, they had three, four, five tables out front adjoining the building. Then they jumped the shark, in my opinion. And when satisfied with three, four, five tables along the building, they put tables out in the curbside area that is now been paved and made into a sidewalk. Had they been content to accept the fact that they didn't have flat space, and they said, "I wanna put tables there," and it is a city sidewalk, and we said, "We have a problem that our tables are not level," and it is, it is, we're in danger of falling. If we'd stopped there and said, "Okay, let us address the flat surface," because it is not a flat surface, and as such, it is, probably at that time was an ADA issue to begin with. Had we said that and stopped there, and said, "Sorry, guy, but the stuff out in the curbside parking area, we cannot address and allow you to have more tables out there. Accept what you got and move on." Unfortunately, we didn't do that. But I think that would have been the appropriate thing. And if his porch was in the way, I'm sorry, but those that disagree, if he created the porch that he wanted, and the porch was in the way of solving the ADA issue, I'm sorry, what do you want, sir? Do you want your tables, or do you want to have a porch? And that's where we should have said, "Here's your choice, but we're not going to create more problems for the city because you wanna have three, four more tables." And then the abomination with the platform was nothing. I agree with the comments, however, that to continue to debate this and go backwards, you're back going backwards, I think we should move forward, should vote the, vote the motion down. But it's about something I made earlier. I think we need to go out and look at the cafe ordinance, the implementation of it, the enforcement of it. Police chief has the right to go around and say, "If you have tables, et cetera, that are in the wrong place, take them out, move away." And I think we really need to take a hard look at the presence of tables in the, in what I call the curbside area, because I think they jumped the shark. The original concept was up against the building. Up against the building, we took an inch, we gave them an inch, all of a sudden, now we got them out. They're an obstacle to safety, they're an obstacle to people moving around, and I think that that should be going at forward action after we vote down this motion. Thank you.
Anybody else with a comment?
Nina, back from council. I'm gonna just tell you another comment.
I just want it noted for the record that my motion was not to remove the wall specifically. I believe there is a relatively easy fix to this. It will result in fewer cafe tables being able to be accommodated, but I think if, and I've talked to the city manager about this before, just cut a hole in that wall at the far end and put in steps and some railings to facilitate the cross of traffic again. And however many tables Mr. Gianni can, can fit in there at that point is great. And I have, I mean, you know, I have all faith in, in our management that, that something that simple could be accomplished in a very short period of time.
Vice Mayor Tillot stated she was gonna make two motions, and then she said, "This cafe permit needs to comply with existing code until such time the code is revised and that it be fixed by October 1st, so it complies in however or whatever method the current city management feels will address the issue." Mr. Slavy seconded the motion. Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
I hate that wall, but no.
Mr. Ralston?
No.
Ms. Hope?
No.
Mayor Jerome?
No.
I wanna make a motion, collateral motion, I'd like to have it considered. I move that we task our city manager to develop a recommended strategy to review our effective sidewalk ordinances and present it to us at a future meeting.
I wanna address that comment, and I was going to make some comment after this is , you know, after the vote was made. I talked with the city manager, and this is, you know, we'll come back about some other issues, but this, it comes out really good now, just now that we're looking at it. Ms. Hope, you mentioned about the, our X phases, and we've talked about that. We've been tied up, this council's been tied up for the last year and a half with looking at our economic development, planning for the economic development, and spending a lot of money and putting a lot of money in reserves and into, I don't know if you ever called, in loans and different things that we're doing to get our economic development, get our infrastructure, getting it moved on out there towards the Innovation District. So we've been really, I think, working really hard along those lines. And not to say that we've given up on the phases, but we mentioned it once or twice before, we're right in the middle again of our, of our budgeting process. We're not through with our CIP yet. And like we just mentioned, Mr. Slavy at the, in our last budget meeting, when we talked about, you know, putting the placeholders in our budgets. And we probably should maybe be looking at our streetscaping, and maybe we can make some process over the next, you know, over the next couple of years, that we start putting the money in there, that we're gonna look at the streetscaping for the next phase and the next couple of phases that we wanna do, get that in the budget. And as placeholders, if not for this council, or future councils, we're then to start looking at. And so, and I like to have that, you know, while we start working on the process. I am in agreement with the, you know, task of the city manager, but like I said, we've already kinda talked about something, I wanna make sure this is what we were talking about this work, fall into play, that we were talking about putting together a possible roundtable forum of the business, as the businesses throughout the downtown area, which I would like to make sure the restaurants are included in that, and all the owners, the different owners throughout the downtown area, and actually around the city in general, not just the down, I don't wanna limit to the downtown. I wanna, I wanna put it out for the whole city, and some kind of roundtable, where we can have it yet, it'll be determined, but I think it's something that's long overdue and, and something I would, I would love to be assistant chairing for this. And it's something that we're, that when they get everybody together like that, that they can help with the decisions, when do you wanna phase in, you know, at what point, what do you wanna do? Baker Street, this street, that street, next. And let, let a committee like that, or a forum, get together, maybe one or two meetings, and something can be done, I think, and, and decisions can be made at that point. And by her task, she can assist in getting this thing all put together. Also, along with that, we're talking about the advisory, you know, we're looking at a review also, now whether or not this forum can help out with this and how we wanna go about doing it, but the review of our ordinances and policies so we can move forward. This has to be done, there's no question about it. This little exercise that we've been going on for about the last month now has really, you know, brought this out to the forefront, that we need to look at something here. I've always mentioned, ever since I came on council this last time being the mayor, I mentioned to our ordinance, to our police chief who's in charge of our ordinance, the codes enforcement, planning and zoning, and different, different venues, that when we see things that aren't working good in this city, you know, through our planning, through our committing process, through the implementations that we're doing, we see things that aren't working in the way they should be working. And instead of trying to force that squirm, peg, and around a hole, that come to the council, bring us a changes, bring us the modifications, exemptions, or revisions to our codes, because there's a lot of things in this city that we have in code that are strictly on, they're just not on, they're not enforceable. So they shouldn't be there. So these are things we should be exempting out. Look at these different things. I think we're at this crossroads now that we need to start looking at what we're gonna be doing here in the future. And whether, like I said, whether it's for this council, for future councils, we need to start now and just start doing this. So I'm in agreement with the, with the motion that you're doing about tasking the city manager to assist, and I will work with her in whatever I can to help out with, with that process and to do that. So any other comments on that motion?
Just, yeah, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the, your motion makers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
I did, and he, usually the person making the motion, he gets the first shot at it, but I don't care.
It's usual, it's usual, I wanted to jump out before I go.
I support that.
But, you know, you go ahead now, you go.
The motion is intended to be broad and general and not, it has no time, it just says it a future meeting, but what it's intended to do is give the manager a policy task that is required for her in any way she wants to do it, working with the group, working with the mayor, working with the council, working with the task force, working with the roundtable. I just think somebody has the responsibility, I like to give the management, manager that responsibility to bring to us recommended ordinance changes, and when we can debate it, assuming they're our summit, we should debate.
Has it been seconded?
That's up to the mayor, he's the boss.
I was seconded, you were seconded.
Oh, okay. May I?
You should.
I, I, I agree with that. I think that as we start to entice businesses to come into our Innovation District or Centers of Higher Learning or whatever, into the Innovation District, that having a well-written, concise, unambiguous set of codes for them to reference is critical. And I think that can only enhance anything that we need to do in the, in the realm of economic development.
Mayor, I should have asked, one of the mistakes I made in this motion is making sure the manager finds that motion acceptable and not orderless.
I would expect it, thank you, sir.
Mayor, yeah, I have some comments. The motion seems pretty good. The only concern I have is that, given past implementation of the existing code, that the situation exists where public property has been used in a way that diminishes the free use of the property by the public as a thoroughfare. So I am concerned that while this addresses it, it still doesn't send as a policy perspective the ideal that public property should remain as much as reasonably possible entirely public. And so I don't know if, you know, what, what that can do.
You know, my response to that, and that is that I think that will be in the motion for us to debate, excuse me, the ordinances that come for us to debate at that time, which we can make the changes, because it's our ordinances. So this is just the broad bones, we'll put flesh on that when we see the ordinances. I think it should satisfy everyone.
So, in other words, the ceding of any public property for either permanent or temporary use by any private entity, then, I'm just, with this as an example, then, would, would have to come before this council as a policy board, before such public property can be assigned temporarily. So that would be part of that, okay.
Yeah, otherwise, we'd have seven or 10 or 15 different details we wanna put in here, and we'll get those, or not, and we can object to it at that time when we get our drafts. I would like to make a motion to amend the motion, though, because some citizens have talked to me and they want more teeth. So I don't know, you know, how to do it, but if the chair allows me to amend the motion, or make a motion to amend the motion, to say that in a way that maximizes public use of public property. I have no objection to that addition because I think that's implied in any ordinance. It's extra surplusage, but I don't mind that at all.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion, and we have an amendment to the motion, so we have a second to that amendment.
Second. Well, if the maker of the motion is amended...
No, 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 that's, that's, that's fine, we're, we're good to go here. You made a motion to amend, is your second to for that amendment?
If the second will agree to the...
No, 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 you're up to bring anything, just, just make the second to the amendment.
I'll second the amendment to the motion.
Okay. We vote on the amendment.
Now we have to vote on the amendment, see if we save that, but that's all.
Okay, so...
We haven't voted on the first motion yet, much less the amendment.
No, because amendment, amendment is asked for amendment, so...
So can we have it restated as to what we're we voting on, please?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm not sure that I have it clear, so this will help me also. Councilmember Ralston moved to task the city manager to effect a strategy to review sidewalk ordinances and present the city council at a future meeting for consideration. And the, and we made sure the manager found the motion acceptable, sorry, I'm having to scroll here. And then Mr. Slavy made a motion to amend the original motion to state in a way that maximizes public use of public property, and Ms. Tillot then seconded and amended the motion.
So we're gonna vote on the amendment, which will then be incorporated into the main motion to be voted on if we, if it then passes. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Nay.
This includes the, we had, we had, we showed that Ms. Hope said it was a nay. And so we have an amendment to the motion, so now we have to go back to the original motion, which is amended with the additional wording, so.
Question of clarification? Was this specifically for sidewalks, was that?
No.
I think, I can, I thought I heard, it was, it was specific, that's what she just, then you just, that's what she just read, I thought.
Yes, sidewalk ordinance, if you're right.
That's what she read.
If you'd like me to read it, I wrote it down. You did.
Let's take a roll poll vote on that, on that main motion.
I don't, I don't know that, the main motion as is typically
It's amended.
But did we get public comment, or?
We had a public comment on the, on the main
Okay, yes.
I think we did, so.
I just want to keep you out of trouble. I'm always looking out for you.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Okay. Are we done with 425?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be pretty quick.
Okay, Ms.
I guess I would like consensus to, to direct our city management to, at whatever time, you know, however long it takes, to produce an inventory of all the city's public property, so that we have it all in one place, even where there are temporary structures residing on said public property, so that as we move forward in some of these renovations, if they become part of the design, if that little piece of real estate becomes
I thought I'd already asked her for that when we were looking
I don't think that was specific in, in, in the, I mean, there's all kinds of public property that we've got, and
We provided the inventory of city facilities, and that, I think that has been provided, buildings, facilities, parks, et cetera. So now I understand that you're expanding that to any city
Any public property. Public, real property. I guess.
Keep in mind, that's going to be virtually impossible, because it will
I know.
Yeah, that's going to be very difficult.
You're looking at quite a bit there, because as we do, as we do drawings, as we do the different things, you have legal descriptions of the property, and it's going to include, at that point, any city-owned property is going to be included in that. So as you do these projects, as they come on board, you're going to know what is city property, what is not city property at that point. So we get an inventory, because it's, how do you, it's not an inventory. We, we have a boundary, and then there's, you know, property ownership on the inside of that, we have, we have streets, you know, you, you're not, it's going to be, it's one of those things that, that's a huge task.
I understand that, but like I said earlier, five, five years from now, nobody's going to remember that that little piece of real estate that is now a patio is actually, you know,
If there's
City property. I mean, and who knows what's going to happen? I'd just like to see, what's our property?
There's, okay, I think the question was
It's a path?
Okay, I think the question was asked in a previous
I'll withdraw, I'm going to
And we, we give away city property, and the answer from the city attorney was no. Okay. So that question was asked
It gets answered before. Right, okay. So we still have, I guess, is your question, though, really about giving property permanently or otherwise, something that should be coming to the city council? Is that kind of the intention?
How do we know if it's, if it's our property? How do we know if it's the public's property, or it's the property of the
Or if it's the property of the individual business entity?
There's already on, already on our ordinances, already in our codes, in one faction, as we're purchasing, and other things, city-owned property, they, and that is to be either leased, sold, given away, there's a process to do that. And it has to be vacated by the city, and it takes the whole process to go through all this thing. So that's already, that's already covered.
Yeah, she's, the question essentially is asking for an abstract to pick up the city real property, and that's going to be one of the thickest abstracts our city attorneys have examined, I'm assuming, and that's
Anything else on 425?
I guess one thing, I guess the point that we're trying to get to is, you know, when we walk out of here, and I know I'm going to get an earful about how de facto we gave away city property. Now, I'm not saying, you know, it looked wrong, and I had malice, anything, whatever, but in the kangaroo court of downtown or our city, you know, got to, got to deal with it. So I guess what, what my question is, do we have adequately what you've mentioned, but do we have something that clearly states that whenever something like this happens, where property is, and I don't mean anger in this phrase, given, you know, however best way to say it, utilized in a way that is no longer available for public use, and it comes before the board? And if we want to vote it on, that's great. But here, it happened an hour after the fact. So I just, that's, I think where you were headed, but
I just think she's got it.
Yeah, she, she has it, and it's all part of the task that she's going to be, we're going to be coming up with in the future. So I think we're, we're good to go from that standpoint.
I'm going to recess.
Is there, okay. Okay, we're going to recess for about 10 minutes or so, and maybe there'll be a